To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor.
Lord, as I come before this council on a regular basis, I consider that a great privilege, and I'm thankful for them and for you. When I think of the times that I come here to pray, it reminds me to also then pray for them when I'm not here, when, just during the day, during the week. They have a tough job, and it's not always easy, and they are overseers for our whole community, and they have a staff that reaches out so wide for this whole community. Pray for them as well. At this Christmas season, I pray for peace, that what Jesus brought on the night He was born, peace on earth, goodwill to men. I pray for their emotional and mental stability as they deal with all the things that are happening in their lives and around the community, that they know people that are hurting and wishing they could do things to help out. And so they do a great job at keeping our little community safe and prosperous, and, Lord, I just thank you for them. May you bless them abundantly this year and in the coming year, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're going to say the council president tonight, so Counselor Henderson will be anointed the president pro temp.
Okay.
So Counselor Butler, the alibi, the hand, and then we take him.
Don't do that, Tom.
All right, are there any good faith amendments to the agenda? Hearing none. Any declarations of conflicts of interest? Hearing none. Any declarations of a council member being in a discussion outside the open meeting on something that we might be voting on tonight or in their future? Are there any announcements for the good of the order? Let's go to the consent agenda, the approval of the minutes for 12 December, the approval of counts payable, and a Terrence Shimwell, who apparently aspires to be a bartender. Chair, would I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Motion has been made by Counselor Resink to accept the consent as printed, and the second was made by Counselor Henderson. Any further discussion or debate? Hearing none, and calling for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it, passes unanimously. One missing. Five. Will she soar again? Next item is the appointment of Beth Rains to the library board. Beth could not be here tonight, but that doesn't mean you can't appoint her. She, if you recall, about a year ago, that was a little more than a year ago, but she filled a position of an individual who had resigned from the board. She filled out that position, and it ends on the 31st, so the chair will entertain a motion to accept Beth for a five-year term to begin 1 January 2024 and to terminate on the 31st of December 2028, and she'll be able to come in later in the week to take the oath. So the chair will entertain that.
Mayor?
Yes.
Making a point, I make, I make a motion that we appoint Beth Rains to the library board for a five-year term starting January 1st, 2024, through December 31st, 2028.
I'll second it.
All right, thank you. Main motion has been made by President Pro Temp Henderson. To appoint Beth Rains to the library board from 1 January 2024 to 31 December 2028, that's the five-year term, and seconded by Counselor Resink. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The eyes have it, motion passes unanimously. The next two matters have to do with our council meeting schedule and the holiday closure schedule.
Okay, council meeting schedule is regular until we get to November and December, and this year, the way everything fell November and December will be exactly the same. We will have our meetings the first and third Tuesdays instead of the second and fourth. So both months are consistent that way. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the 2024 council meeting schedule as presented.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Counselor Henderson has moved to approve the 2024 council meeting schedule, seconded by Counselor Resink. Any further discussion or debate? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The eyes have it unanimously. The next item is see the holiday closure schedule.
Okay, that one is exactly the same as it was this year. Our, our 12 holidays, we do have an extra one this year, though, on Christmas Eve. Christmas falls on a Wednesday instead of on the weekend or on a Friday or Monday, so we will close at 12 o'clock Christmas Eve, 12 noon on Christmas Eve for the employees to be excused to go home. That's the only thing that's different. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the 2024 holiday closure schedule as presented.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Main motion has been made by Counselor Henderson to approve the 2024 holiday closure schedule as presented. Second was made by Counselor Resink. Is there any further discussion or debate? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Next matter is to approve payment to the Northwest Industrial Repair in the amount of $16,996.19.
Mayor, council, so tonight I'm asking for a motion to approve payment to Northwest Industrial Repair in the amount of $16,996.19 for an equalizer blower for our wastewater treatment plant. Any questions?
Mayor? Yes, sir. I move to approve payment to Northwest Industrial Repair in the amount of $16,996.19 for an equalizer blower for the wastewater treatment plant.
I second it.
Thank you. Main motion has been made by Counselor Butler to approve the payment to the Northwest Industrial Repair in the amount of $16,996.19 for an equalizer blower for the wastewater treatment plant. Second was made by Counselor Sorensen. Is there any further discussion or debate? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. No nays. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Sullivan?
The Groveland PUD subdivision.
Evening, Mayor, council. So yes, we have the Groveland request for a time extension on the PUD. Groveland is the property at the end of Fourth Street and Substation Road, the 46 acres that Denny White owns. So he's requesting a time extension of one year on that property.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question on Denny White's residence. It says he's on East Second Street. He's on East First Street.
Oh, okay.
I didn't, I didn't know if anybody caught that or if it made any difference.
Yeah, no, that's Denny's, that's Denny's, that's my mind. Well, I made a mistake, but, no, that's Denny's. I know where Denny was, just right down the road, but I don't think that really matters.
I didn't think it, I, I thought I'd ask, just in case. I was like, why does it say that? Because that's him that must have done that.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Good heavens, yes.
I make a motion that we approve a one-year time extension to start construction of Groveland PUD subdivision, PUD, with an option to file another extension upon showing good cause. Construction must start two years from the written date of approval, which will be November 18th, 2024.
I'll second it.
All right. Everyone hear the motion, so I don't have to repeat it. You have it in writing. Motion was made by Counselor Henderson with a second by Counselor Resink. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next matter is to approve a bond from Alejandro Ayala Jr. for $7,800 for the guarantee of curb, gutter, and sidewalk installation.
Yeah, so we have a newly manufactured home installed down on the Wardwell Loop at 918 South McKinley. We call it the Wardwell Loop, but it's on South McKinley, actually, is the address. Weather has delayed putting that in, so we'd like to post a bond for guarantee of improvement. The bond is 150% of the $5,200, so the bond will be $7,800. Director Siemens has looked at that and has approved that dollar amount, so I'm looking for approval for that bond.
Mayor?
Yes.
I move to accept the bond from Alejandro Ayala Jr. with A&R Construction, Inc. for $7,800 for the guarantee of curb, gutter, and sidewalk installation for property located at 918 South McKinley.
Second. Let her have it.
I'm going to go to the videotape.
I respect my elders, you can give it to them.
Wow. I didn't say it.
All of you back up.
Yeah.
Wow.
Just back away. All right. Motion has been made by Counselor Sorensen with a second, although there was a tie, but I give the tie to the runner, who was Counselor Henderson in this instance. To approve the bond from Alejandro Ayala Jr. for A&R Construction for $7,800 for the guarantee of curb, gutter, and sidewalk installation at the property mentioned in the motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Approve the final plot of Skyhawk subdivision.
All right, so exactly what you said, the final plot application for Skyhawk subdivision. The file number is FP23-001. Tonight is the city council meeting. The applicant is Kent Brown. The representatives are John Loud Jr. and David Wild from Trilogy Development Incorporated. Application summary, the applicant, Kent Brown, is requesting approval of a final plot application for Skyhawk subdivision. The subdivision includes 28 single-family residential lots, 15 multifamily lots, and five common lots. The required improvements have been installed and reviewed by city staff. The landscaping will not be completed by the council meeting, and the owner is requesting acceptance of a letter of credit to guarantee the landscaping is complete. The subdivision is located on the south side of West Fourth Street and east of South Mill Road. The preliminary plot was approved by the city council on April 27th, 2021, with requested extensions of time to file a final plat approved by council. And the city code 10-2-4 outlines the procedures for final plat approval. Subsection F notes that prior to approving or disapproving a plat, at least one public meeting deliberation shall be held by the city council. No public hearing is required for final plat applications, and no notice was given, other than posting the meeting agenda. Subsection G notes that the council may delay their decision pending submission of additional information or approve or disapprove the final plat application as presented. The applicant is requesting a letter of credit in the amount of $224,136 for the following improvements, which is completion of the landscaping. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval of the final plat application for Skyhawk with a site-specific, specific conditions of approval being part of the motion.
All right. Any questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the final plat of Skyhawk subdivision, adopt the staff report, include number four, and cite specific conditions of approval as part of the approval.
I'll second it.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made by Counselor Henderson to approve the final Skyhawk subdivision, to adopt the staff report, and include number four, cite specific conditions of approval as part of the approval process. The second was made by Counselor Resink. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All ayes, no nays, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Final plea, the approval of a utility easement between Jim County and the City of Emmett.
So this is a document that our two attorneys, Jake and Tajia, have been working on for quite some time to allow city utilities to be run in the county right-of-way, which is from 12th Street, south across Highway 16, to the property on the corner over there. This has been in front of the county commissioners and has been signed by them, so we're looking for approval and signature of the mayor on the document.
Is there any further discussion, questions? If not, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion we approve utility easement agreement between Jim County and the City of Emmett and the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made by Counselor Henderson to approve the utility easement agreement between Jim County and the City of Emmett with the mayor to sign. Is there any further discussion or debate? Hearing none. The president is absent. Counselor Butler?
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Harris?
Yay.
Counselor Henderson?
Yay.
Counselor Resink?
Yay.
Counselor Sorensen?
Yay.
Five yays, one absent. Motion passes unanimously. All right. What do you have to say for yourself?
Let's get out of here. You all have my report. Are there any questions? Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Okay, anything for me? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. G2, Mayor, council.
You have the chief's reports. Do you have any question?
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Alice?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for completing my library board. I appreciate that. You have my report. Any questions for me? Okay, Merry Christmas.
Mayor and council, you have my report. Do you have any questions?
Hearing none. Public works.
Gosh.
Mayor, council, do you have any questions for me? Perfect, thank you.
And hang on, hang on, hang on, I'm sorry.
I need, when I come up here, I need undivided attention.
They were giving me a bad time, okay?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you just hold your horses?
We're trying to get him to hurry up, sorry.
I would like, I'd like to know, how's Johns doing, the end of Johns?
It's done.
It's totally done?
Well, our portion's done.
Okay.
Were you not here to the last meeting?
Were you here last week?
No, he wasn't.
I wasn't?
No.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Usually you're here. Well, I was.
I just wanted to know.
Didn't know you weren't here, but no, we completed it.
Okay.
So our portion, and then there's some other stuff that the county needs to do, but we're done.
He was here last week.
One other question?
He was, wasn't he?
Yes, he was.
What, I was?
He was here last week.
Sorry, okay, sorry, what is your other question?
The other question is, we had a power failure, I don't know, last, was it today or yesterday?
Yesterday.
Did all the generators kick on, everything work?
Yes, Director Conidall was all over that, and we had a full, yeah, everything, everything.
How long was it off?
Well, for us, just a few seconds, in our plants, but, I mean, I only got alerts that the generator's fired, so, yeah.
Awesome.
There you go.
Good training.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, any questions?
He answered them.
Perfect. Have a good Christmas, everybody.
Thank you. Have a Merry Christmas.
Chair will entertain item nine, adjournment, with a Merry Christmas to all and to all a good Merry Night.
Mayor? Make a motion we adjourn.
All right. I'll second.
It's been seconded.
All in flavor?
Counselor Harris. So it'll be H squared. The main motion was made by Counselor Henderson. Counselor Harris, you're seconded. All those in favor to adjourn, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You need a alligator.
30 seconds.
How dare you mess up?
God.
Hmm. Ooh. Hey, don't forget chocolate cake back here, take it home with you.
Oh, yeah. It's good.
Oh, thank you.
And really soft and velvety.
Tona made it, it has to be good.
Oh, don't say that, that's not necessarily the case.
One thing I miss is the darn biscuits and gravy.
Sorry about that.
You know.
I can't go anywhere but people telling me how bad that place is.
It is. It's just wrong.
I'm glad that everybody misses me. I miss everybody. Oops, I almost forgot my candy bar. How dare me? Hey, Al, do you want any chocolate cake to take home for you and Belle?
Over the hill once in a while. Yeah, how about, how about sometimes?
Back here in the office.
Oh, go to sometimes.
What?
One piece for my wife.
You don't want any?
I've had enough.
I get out of bounds, and people are feeding me sweets and sweets.
Al, do you want to take some home to Daryl? Nope, he doesn't like it.
Finals week.
Oh, has it been going?
Today I had a kid that was just an ass.
There's another play over here.
I'm telling you, you're not taking my class next semester. So he, smart ass, he writes down on his test, I don't know, I don't know, psychopath. But instead you write, I don't know. Just turd.
Well, he'll be an absolute failure.
Just a turd.
Merry Christmas.
From Vacation, right?
That's one of those days.
Is it?
I'm not in church, so I can cuss.
Wait, was that from Vacation?
Christmas Vacation.
I've heard a quote.
Merry Christmas.
I've never seen it, but I've heard the quote of it, and that's the only thing I knew.
My wife didn't allow me to go to it.
Hey, it's in the movie. Have you seen that movie?
I have.
Love it. Merry Christmas.
Did you have?
Merry Christmas, I'm gonna say the rest. Don't look at me like I'm gonna say the rest.
The cat getting zapped under the couch.
I did a funeral the other day, and they wrote a deal, how maybe a child wrote, and there were four or five places they crossed out, those square words, and put in another word. I said, thank you, friend, everybody.
See, when I, when I did my mom's, I said, when my mother was sick in her last days at the hospital, I told her, I said, hey, for you, when she did her funeral, and she looked at me and said, Pastor McQuaid won't let me talk like that. My mother was Karen, her real name's Karen.
She loved Karen.
Yeah. Gordon knew my mom, Karen.
Yeah.
Funny lady. She told, she's like, she reminded me to Trump, she just tells it like it is.
Battles don't fall far from people.
Now, I thought I might fall on the floor.
Mm-hmm. When what?
When you respect your elders.
Yeah. I respect my elders.
Wasn't that a good response?
It was, but see, I thought you were, I just didn't know which, where you were headed with that.
Well, Tona's older than me, so.
I know.
She's my elder.
Everybody here's older than you.
I thought you were gonna say that you would respect your elders being the mayor when he made the choice of whoever he was gonna give it to, and then you just went a little bit further.
It wasn't me, it was Kim, like I said. I'm definitely taking these bad boys, too.
Thank you. Have a Merry Christmas.
Somebody didn't eat their cake.
It wasn't, um.
Have you ever noticed that these, I have to have that sweet before you go to bed. So there's ice cream cones, they're fat boy, crayling ice cream cones. They are the bomb. You gotta try them. Every time I go to the store, I buy three boxes of them.
You have an addiction.
If you just sip a little.
You have an addiction.
I do. Have a good Christmas, Lyra.
You too. Thanks, Al. Do you want some of this?
I don't, Tony.
Okay.
There's so much.
Is your family all home?
Heidi will be home tomorrow. Whoever have this one in touch.
Who's gonna send this light in the sink?
What's up? This report?
Yeah. You cracked the hood.
Thank you. He'd come over and watch Netflix with us or something.
I was really tired when I opened it at five o'clock, so I had to cut the coffee. And he gave me all the sugar, so it's like, pretty nice.
Yeah, I, I have the problem of, I can't sleep. And, um, I, I go to sleep, and I sleep until I have a cup of water.
In your chair?
No, 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 I'm on the bed.
Always stay up watching TV.
And then wake up at midnight, one o'clock.
No, they don't actually let me fall asleep for more than a few minutes, otherwise I'm really tired. No, no, I don't have any reason for waking up, so maybe I sleep for a couple of hours a day. And I always... Why do they, why do they guys drive me nuts?
And then they're just laying there.
Then I'm just awake, so I can't turn my mind down, so last night, I was still at four o'clock. Not last night, that quarter was seven.
I was exhausted.
But not now. I can smell the air on my bum. I have the bees on my bum, because I, I get a big, I have a very impersonal, apparently, because I, then I, that's all I do.
Thanks for coming out.
I got it. Hopefully, this will not have a hard, my, I'm sorry, say, hopefully this doesn't leak any stuff out there.
Is this yours?
Yes.
All right, you got it.
All right, hang on a second, I'm, I'm, I'm... I tipped it. I was just wondering.
The door was open.
It wasn't early. Well, thank you. Have a Merry Christmas.
Have a Merry Christmas. Oh, looks like Mike didn't turn off the cameras. Well, let me see what I can do.
Now I need a passcode, shoot.
What's that?
Who wants a passcode?
Dunno.
Sign out. Yeah, tell him what do I need to do, because I... It takes me by the passcode. Join the meeting with contact. Maybe I got it. Here we go, there we go.
Just a minute.
I think I got it.
We think we got it.
Yeah, it's off, it's off.
All right, we figured out how to shut down the TVs. Yeah. Yeah. All right. See you later.